Called this meeting Saint John's City Council to order July 16th, 2019. Are there any additions to the agenda? Okay, any citizens' comments?
Guys, Julie Lyon, Mary Stafford, again, and Lisa Milton. We're both representing Sunflower Diversified. She's on the board as well as I am. Just kind of wanting to follow up with the request that we had for the $1,000 two weeks ago, I think. Just gonna present some new information. The Stafford City Council has approved $1,000 towards the transportation contract. The county commissioners have appropriated funds to be dispersed later. And we are waiting to hear from you guys, basically, before we approach Great Bend City and Barton County. We've been talking about it because it's gonna go forward either way. We'd really like for everybody to be on board and supportive of it so we can be a united front when we go to Barton County. And it just looks good for the citizens that we're gonna be serving if everybody's on board, not like, oh, well, how come these people are and these people aren't? We still had requests, you know, I sent a message earlier to post it on Facebook at 4:00 this afternoon, somebody looking for a vehicle so they could get to appointments and stuff. And these people are looking for like $500 vehicles that will last, you know, a month or so. So it just kind of reinforced the need for this, even if it was just once a month that they went. The other comments that we've heard is there was some question about sending money out of town. These people are going out of town anyways. One of ones that does not have a vehicle that would be using this service said, oh, good, now I can only pay $4 instead of the $15 that my buddy charges me to take me to town, you know? So just again, I mean, we would stand for any questions here, but I'm gonna ask that we would be able to have $1,000 to Sunflower Diversified for the once-a-week transportation bus.
Counsel?
That's once a week, you say?
Maybe once a week on Thursdays, and we're just asking for one year and see how things go. If nobody uses it, there would be no sense to go through all the work of writing the grant that we did to do it again. So just to see how it's utilized and if it's gonna go over as well as we think it will. We've had further conversation, talked to Leanne Russell and some of those that are involved with the Circles Group here that were unaware of it still. And she was gonna come tonight.
Yeah, she was.
She was like, oh, I hope they do that. That would be really good, but was feeding people or something.
Yeah, she was delivering meals.
But the more people we talk to, it's, oh yeah, that would be a good service, you know? And it's $1,000 from, you know, each of our communities, but the actual transportation grant is far larger. So you'd be getting much more dollar-wise than what you would be.
They're already running a route. This is just at a different time in the day?
It's for a different purpose, but it could be mixed in with that one. So they pick up people that need their services and maybe take them to the day facility that they have there in Great Bend. Some of those that are physically impaired and can't do stuff, they take care of them up there during the day because a lot of times the caregivers are working and doing other things. So they run that route once in the morning and once in the evening to bring them home. If somebody went up early in the morning, they could catch this bus back home. So it's gonna be open to anybody, whether you have a vehicle or not. I would encourage, you know, see how it works. I've done some experiments and said, asked my sister, hey, see if we can get to Stafford, you know, without me being involved. So it wasn't, oh, well, we better get this one taken care of, you know? And it worked for her. So it's a little bit of a lengthy process, you know? It took her a little over an hour to get from Great Bend to Stafford because they went Saint John, dropped off, Maxville, dropped off, and then went to Stafford. So it was a little bit of a haul, but it saved me a trip, which was worth the million dollars to me, so.
What does counsel think?
Shouldn't this be a new business as it's not on the agenda? I don't think we should take action under citizen comment.
It wasn't on the agenda because they brought it to us and we were supposed to revisit it. So it should be under old business.
Regardless, we need an answer if we're gonna do anything or not. But my concern is, we have a grocery store here now and a pharmacy, and I hate to start seeing people take advantage of that bus to go get cheaper groceries or their preferred pharmacy. We have our own city bus too. I mean, is that seniors use it right now to go out of town or what?
It can be used by anyone. Like, they just have to come and go through like a driving class on how to drive the bus.
Isn't this primarily for appointments, medical appointments?
That would be the ideal situation.
Okay.
It's just to provide an option. Like I said, the ones that have been talked to, they're already going there.
Right.
I don't see this, especially once a week, being a huge money sucker, you know? If I was concerned about it, I would not be in favor for it, but I've found, working with my city, that it would be a benefit.
But it was also a turnoff whenever he said that only one person's using it right now in Saint John is what I remember him saying.
They're picking up the special needs.
Yes.
That's a special needs ride, I mean, not?
Yes. And this would not necessarily be for special needs people. This would be for anybody.
Which anybody's free to ride the special needs one as well, isn't that correct?
It's $2, so it's not free, but it's $2.
Well, I guess what I meant is allowed.
And anybody, correct. It is general public transportation. They, the way it's written through KDOT, they can do both. I mean, it's the same thing. Just because they have special needs, they're still general public.
I agree with you. I just am concerned about helping people out. And I don't necessarily want to pay for a double overlap service, but maybe, maybe that's all right.
I think pretty much you have most of what everybody needs in Saint John. And I think we should support it as I know it's just one time a week, but, you know, I think it's, you know, not a necessity to shop out of town. It's pretty much a luxury.
Again, this is primarily for medical appointments.
We have medical, parks, but, well, yeah.
Some people don't go there, though.
But the other thing, when they're in the morning, they can get the bus in the morning as well.
Which bus?
The one that they run.
Take the $2.
The $2 ride in the morning.
In the early morning. And we have a bus already. I mean, that's maybe something Stafford maybe doesn't have.
Correct.
You know?
But the other thing is to be realistic. Are you really, you think your doctors are really gonna work with you and to the days that those buses go up there, I mean, it might not even work out like we want it to for the doctor's appointments.
Any idea on Barton County? You've talked about talking to them, but, I mean, they're, are they identified as this dollar or are they in favor, you think, or?
I feel confident it's gonna go forward either way. Like I said, it would just be easier to ask because we're asking for a larger percentage from the city of Great Bend and from Barton County. We're splitting that in half what we were splitting between three people down here. So we're asking for more up there and just felt it would be easier if we were like, hey, Stafford County needs this because I've been working for, it's been a year now that I've been on the board, and I'm kind of a squeaky wheel, and I want services in Stafford County. And I've tried to do as much as I can for my city, you know, so we do have the paper shredding. We are looking at enhanced recycling. The transportation was a need that was identified early on. So just trying to make it happen.
Marshall, what do you think?
Well, I kind of think that's how we have a bus of our own. I mean, that's what it's designed for. What are we keeping it around if we're gonna give $1,000 to have someone else hold people around?
Jeff?
I can't say, but I'll, I don't think it's our best interest.
I appreciate the process. I thoroughly enjoy it.
Unfortunately, yes, that's.
Thanks for coming to it.
That's okay. Thanks for your consideration, and we'll still be.
Well, wish you best of luck with all this stuff.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay. Are there any more citizens' comments? Okay. All right, consent agenda, approved minutes, regular council meeting, July 2nd, 2019. Entertained a motion? A motion and a second. All in favor? Okay. Motion carries. 4-1. Appropriation ordinance 7-16-19 and the amount of $57,900, excuse me, $697.77. Entertained a motion for that?
Second.
Have a motion and a second. All in favor?
Upstair.
Upstair. Okay. Motion carries, 3-2. Petty cash in amount of $199.79. Entertained a motion for that? Have a motion and a second. All in favor? Motion carries, 5-0. Okay. Department heads. Jason Wyatt.
He's not here. He, I talked to him a little bit this afternoon, and he said they haven't been doing anything that you guys would need updates on. But if you had any questions, I would take them back and get answers or just here to answer anything that's going on.
Anybody have any questions? Moving on, public works supervisor, David.
The only thing I have is about those signs. Tiger head is too detailed for them to do with all the little lines and whiskers, all that. So they're pretty much out. I contacted Kinsley. They were gonna fax over, they got all the information, they're gonna fax over where they got them, how much it was, things I've had, I haven't received yet. I didn't get my email checked today. You know, we're busy pulling concrete, so maybe it's there, I don't know. I'll check it in the morning and see. But that company that the city's used before is too detailed. Even sending them, I had Tara Kenneman send me a link to the Tiger website or whatever it is, some links, and they said it was still too detailed. We'd have to find something really similar. The one in Kinsley is like a cartoon character, coyote. Unless we do something like that, all the Tiger ones I've found are just, I wouldn't even, I wouldn't even do them.
Anything else? If they have any questions for Dave.
What's your guys' agenda then? I see you're working on the dip on Second West.
I gotta do concrete before I do asphalt, before we start milling.
You're milling, you're gonna go from the cutoff?
Turn down west and go west to Bobby Steinman's.
Okay.
I got some current flow line and that dip and things like that that I gotta do first on, I have to go back and redo it.
Yeah.
Anything else for Dave? Moving on, grant administrator, Lisa Cornwell. You have anything from Lisa? Okay. Moving on, police chief, do you have anything from the police?
Um, no.
Moving on.
Remind all your family and friends to take care of their dogs. We've had an insane amount of dog calls, which we're taking care of right now, so.
We're just about full. We've got three out of the four pens full down there now.
There's only one down there.
Is there one gone, are they gone? Up to yesterday, we had a full house, just about.
We took 14 or 16 dogs to the vet last week.
Is this just loose animals or?
That one was a little bit of a different scenario, but yes.
They're puppies, weren't they?
Yeah, well, we found, yeah, there was several, and then we found six puppies too, so.
All right. Moving on, fire chief, Michael.
I don't have anything.
Okay. Okay, Jamie, city clerk.
I just am requesting your guys' approval. There is an opportunity for a leadership program through, what is it, five counties, John?
Uh, four, really.
Okay, so it's like a four-county-wide leadership program. Basically, I'd be going to Pratt once a month on a Tuesday from 8:30 to 4:30, I think, and then a couple other things. I think the cost is $350, which is under my spending limit, so I'm not really, I just need you guys to tell me that you're on board and supporting what I'm doing. So I need a signature, so.
The training through KLC alone is worth thousands of dollars, so.
Which I'll miss, I'll miss some of it because I think the trip, there's a trip to Topeka in February, but I won't more than likely be trying to make that. And then I think there's one class during city clerk school that I'll just have to, John said I can meet with, like, the teacher after or something and get caught up.
You said it's how often and how long will it last?
It's, it's like basically the school year. It's once a month, 8:30 to 4:30 in Pratt.
It's doable.
And I try to skip to my doctor appointments on the same day.
Okay, it looks like the council consensus is okay with all this.
I'm good with it.
Okay, all right. Got anything else?
I think that's it for that line.
Got nothing else? Okay. Okay, moving on, city superintendent, Jeff.
I don't have anything.
Okay.
Just trying to keep the lights on, keep things together while it's hot.
Sounds good. All right, city attorney, John.
I don't have anything, no.
All right. Okay, moving on to old business, West Street. Nothing?
Still letting them pound rock in. I mean, until they get it pounded in with trucks and stuff like that, there ain't much more we can do.
I think that's made a big improvement out there.
It's, I mean, you're up and down.
Yeah. Best it's ever been.
I think we're getting somewhere.
Yeah, definitely.
No question. It's a little rough on a bicycle, but.
Get bigger tires.
Big, bigger tires.
Trade tires on.
Okay. Any other questions for West Street? Moving on, street signs, I think we already covered that?
Do we need to be making that decision, David, so we don't miss our deadline on your guys' goal of when we're gonna get those on that mascot thing on affecting our delivery time?
No.
Have we got plenty of time?
Yeah.
Okay.
Basically, they print it the same time they do the signs, but she said it wouldn't be very long because this is about the slow time because people try to do it in the fall. Once it gets a little closer, then it'll start picking up.
Okay.
But I've been in contact with them, probably once or twice a week.
David, you said that the Tiger, with all the detail in it, was too difficult for them to print. What about a Tiger paw, like what you have on your shirt?
I can email it to her and see.
Okay.
I didn't, I was looking at a head, but, I mean, that still symbolizes it.
Right.
Yeah.
Okay. All right.
That's what I said. We could just get some final one.
Okay, Elster contract and invoice.
Did you guys get the documents I sent you? Did you go over?
It was just now.
No.
You're talking about 60 pages? No, I didn't.
Oh, I guess. Yeah, I got it.
It was in our package.
Definitely a tree killer.
It was right after the meeting I sent it.
It'll take a project.
This is in the market.
Yeah.
Yeah, I did. It's not in the packet. I didn't open it and email it.
So there's a few issues with the contract. Number one, we can't figure out when you guys went into an agreement with the company. I can't find it in the minutes, which I went back to, I think I went back to August of And John doesn't have it in his notes.
What in my notes?
The contracts are a little bit confusing because the contracts say 15, but everything I'm reading happened in 16.
Have you reviewed the video?
No. I was just merely, I couldn't even find it in the minutes, so I didn't know where to, I don't know where.
I don't know if that would help or not.
I don't know when, I don't know when, I don't know the beginning process.
My guess is it's gonna be 16. I think this is just a form contract that they probably put together in 2015. So it's gonna be in October of 2016.
When were the meters fully put in?
We started in January of 17.
17, yeah.
I think, I think that contract was done, I'm gonna say right after Cory left. Because Cory said in on the day that we went through that stuff, it was him and I and Nick when we met with those guys. And then after that, I don't know, it was out of my hands, so I don't know.
That's what I'm thinking.
But I'm gonna say it was sometime, sometime in the fall of 16 would be my guess.
And I didn't have very much luck with the note, with the minutes.
See, it does provide what, it does provide the annual payment and then the per-unit fee of what, 27 cents?
Yeah.
Monthly payment, which explains the charges.
Probably no way around it.
When's that bill due, Jim?
Well? The end of month?
We're in answer to the end of this.
That's what 27 cents per meter charge.
The $391, it could, because, oh, it doesn't have enough.
That's monthly?
Yes.
391.95.
Yeah, that is.
That's for pulling the meter, isn't it?
That we have 14, 68 endpoints.
Reoccurring per meter monthly fees, 391.95.
Anytime we go turn one on and off, I mean, anything that has to be done through them, we get charged for.
It's .267 times the number of endpoints that we have for the monthly. And then for the annually, are you looking at the?
The reoccurring annual fee for the UEP application is $8,700 a year. And then the reoccurring per meter monthly fee.
We're still covering the contract.
And then it says down at the bottom, annual SMA adder, 544, annual equipment maintenance fees, 895. So that's what we're gonna pay annually.
And I don't know that we've seen the 544 and 895 yet.
Tell me.
This makes me question a little bit and forgot since a year and a half.
Yeah, they obviously know what's going on.
I know that the city of Ottawa told them to eat one of them. Because I went to a school with a guy from Ottawa, KMU, and he told them, he said, if you're that late and send them, we're not gonna pay it.
I've done that with a few companies.
Yeah.
They got their own tech, they got their own tech set up though there. I mean, they have guys that do this every day. Maybe they do their own processing and stuff too. See, we had that option too, to put in the server, do all that stuff, but I think it was quite a bit more advanced. Anybody here was really want to do.
I don't know that we're on the demanding side of this contract.
That monthly fee obviously changes then, however many meters we shut off, turn on, and so on.
Yeah.
So I can't see if the meters are even going, we've been having a lot of issues with the meters right now.
Well, you're gonna have to pay it, but we just need to monitor it. That needs to be top priority of.
We have a lot of issues with the same meters.
It's on the, like, we have it on the calendar now, so we check with them monthly.
Yep. Same meters, you having problems?
We've had some meters that we've changed and we keep having problems with them. And I talked to a guy from Elster that I deal with out of Kansas City, and he tells me that if the meters will ping, they should read. And I have a way to ping them with a handheld, to talk to them, to see if they're sending out a signal. Well, they still say that they're not receiving that. They can see it, but they can't pick it up. So I was gonna get on the phone. I, I'm not sure how far I can go with this because the guy that we let go a couple years ago was a guy that was on top of this and understood it. But I still think it's something in the transfer between where it comes from the meter and goes into what we call the gatekeeper. That's the gathering point where all of it comes in. But I'm wondering too, and I've discussed this with Jamie a little bit, if part of this is not due, we use Verizon for these two gatekeepers, and if we're far enough out on the end of the signal, that it may pick up and drop and receive, and that's where part of this is coming from. So I, I wanna call this Eric that we deal with at Utilismart and see about getting this on Golden Belt where we use a modem at the wellhouse. And that way the signal is solid all the time, and when we have problems, we can call them and we can get them straightened out. That's a problem we've had. So let me look into it. I'll get back with you in two weeks and we'll see what happens. But I still, this, this Pat Walls, the guy that I deal with out of Kansas City, tells me that he likens a gatekeeper to like a bucket of milk. That you, you pour that bucket out, but you set it back down and there's still residual in the bucket. And so you have to hit those a couple, two or three times to get everything out of them. And, and I still think that's where it's coming from, that some of these, some of these readings are staying in here and they're not coming out. And I think that's the reason. It might be because of poor signal. They, they wanted us to go on Verizon when we first did it because Verizon's somebody they dealt with. But we're starting to see over time that we think it's partly modem problems. So if the signal's not coming completely through, that might be part of the reason we're not getting these. We've changed a couple of these, three of these meters twice or three times. We have the same problem. And I could talk to every one of them, so. Just gonna have to get to the bottom of it somewhere.
Just not sending the reading to the.
And it seems to have been in the last six or eight months is where it's come from because before that, everything we put in comes right in, but.
You're still getting the right calculation on the meter as far as what they're using.
Oh, yeah.
It's just not sending it to the.
Well, we go back and read them by hand. We have eight or 10 that we read by hand every month because of that, but we shouldn't have to. I mean, we had a 99% effective system that was working every month.
Right.
Until these last five or six or seven months, and we've started to have problems and it doesn't make any sense. But the guy that originally processed all this stuff, the guy we dealt with, left the company and they give us a new guy, and I still think there's a glitch there somewhere that they're missing something. The software to read that, pick it up and add, it can be fairly lengthy depending on what the readings are and what it's pulling through, what it's taking. But I, I still think it's on their end. I don't think it's here.
Yeah.
So let me look into it some more and see what happens.
Surely we pay some sort of service contract.
Pam's, Pam's dealing with it.
But I know Pam and I have been back and forth on this half a dozen times, and it just doesn't make sense. And 99% of them are water meters, they're not electric meters, so.
Okay. Well, we're gonna have to pay it at the end of the month. You're keeping track of everything? Looking at it? Okay, that's all we can ask.
We have to think about paying a reduced payment for lack of service. Paying 90% till they improve their service.
Their services aren't being asked of yet. He hasn't requested, he's talked to a consultant that came out to tell him that he was in our area now. I mean, he hasn't requested help, so I don't feel like that's a viable solution if we haven't requested the help.
So you're saying you just go ahead and pay it and then if.
I mean, Pam's been working on it, but we haven't.
Exit soon.
Yeah. I mean, the guy that came out was just someone telling us that he's in our area now.
Right.
No, we haven't.
Sales.
They need to approve that bill?
Yeah.
How much was it?
Well, I don't know. Do they?
De-table it for us.
Yeah, we have to.
I think you need to prove it.
What's the dollar amount?
What it was?
$9,091.96.
So that's for this year's?
Mm-hmm. I'll make sure I'm telling you that right. 7/19 to 6/2020.
And that was the right amount, $9,091.96?
Mm-hmm.
I'd make a motion to approve the bill for Elster for $9,091.96.
Second. Have a motion and a second. Any more discussion? All in favor? All opposed? Okay, motion carries, 4-1. Okay, motion carries, four to one. Okay, moving on. Carpet and skating rink.
Well. So. I am attempting at getting a little bit more information from different companies because of the price of that carpet. Um, I called Lowe's and I had a guy come out today and measure, but I haven't had time to run to Hutch. So I think I'm going to Wichita on Sunday, so I'll take some time out of that trip and run over and look for carpet. I think that it's gonna probably be okay to not redo the senior center cause the traffic flow in there is, I mean, the carpet's still pretty good. Uh, it's the skating rink and maybe Danton's office, um, like his, there's a little bit a little bit like of a wave, I guess, in his office from the flow. Um, the carpet on the walls, I think I'm gonna look at just trying to get someone coming and steam clean, clean them really good. Cause I don't know that replacing that carpet's a good idea. Oh, a steam clean?
Cause it's glued on, I think we'd have issues later on.
Well, all of it's glued, it's all, like, all of that carpet over there is glued on carpet.
Did you get the estimate from Abby's?
No, I never cau- I never got a price, that pri- the co- price of that carpet's nine ninety nine. And when I went to Lowe's looking at some of the stuff, it was like three dollars and under, so I didn't even, I didn't even get the price for that because.
So we don't have any idea where we're at?
No, but I'm, yeah.
So Abby's and Lowe's are the two you're gonna ask?
But I think that they had me pick out the wrong carpet because I di- I didn't know that it was glued down carpet, and I don't, I think that would make a difference.
Something to keep in mind is when you pick out the floor carpet, you, you need to stick to that good kind there, don't get it from Lowe's. Cause it's with them rolling on it, the kids and the high traffic, we're gonna be replacing it pretty soon, so I think it's worth having a bit, the good stuff for the floor.
Well, I don't know if you can glue that stuff down, cause from what I've researched, if you glue, like, can you glue that?
I don't see it.
Okay.
That mean they know about it, but I'm just saying, I think we need to get the good quality for the floor at least.
But they came out and measured it?
Lowe's did, yeah, and they had like a free measuring thing, so.
Abby's came out and measured it too?
No, they wouldn't, they wouldn't come out till I went, yeah.
So what picking the carpet out has anything to do with measuring it?
Yeah.
Oh, neither.
This has been a nightmare, but the like, it's not broke up, but it was about twenty five hundred square feet is what we'll be looking at with, with the senior center included, so it'll be less than that.
And that's the walls, the table tops, that's everything?
No, you start getting into that little booth area, it's custom upholstered and it's really expensive. The walls, I had just planned on steam cleaning, and then the baseboard that's carpeted is actually just a piece of wood. And the guy that I was talking to today was talking about this rubberized something, and I thought that might be a good idea since the, the skates, but I wanted to see prices before, we looked more into that.
You're talking about the swirly of the ring?
Cause we could just pull up that carpet, I mean, we'd have to repaint every year, but if it's just the boards, I mean, it'd be better than the carpet coming up, cause basically with that kind of carpet, you can get a spot and just keep pulling. And that's what it looks like as being done, so.
Tell them bring the carpet sample with them, they can, they'll point and make us.
Yeah, I don't think you need to stop and look, you don't have to, they can.
Yeah.
Well, they, they've already come today and measured, so.
Hecking.
Yep.
This was Lowe's, I guess, they measured.
More discussion? Okay, moving on, Witt Center.
I think last meeting, and now that you guys are here, um, we kinda talked about rent on the office over there. What are your guys' thoughts of something like that?
We just, I'm a more of a visual person, so I just put some things down on paper. Trey's copier doesn't know how to count, so I don't think I made enough. Pass them out.
Down you go.
So we would be purchasing a mower, so we would, we would be willing to mow the soccer fields during soccer season if that would help take care of some of that, and then, um, where we wouldn't be maintaining that, the soccer fields, I suppose if you guys wanted to charge us a fee to have soccer out there on Saturdays, we could discuss that.
You guys just typically use cornmeal park for soccer, is that the only one?
Yeah, mm-hmm, that's it, yeah. And then the second one, the dance and exercise class, the current setup is Ally, the, the parents of the children in Ally's dance class pay thirty two dollars to the rec. The rec turns around and pays thirty dollars back to Ally. And then we do, so we pay her as an employee, we take taxes out of it, send all that in, um, so she gets thirty of the thirty two dollars. The other two dollars was to go to insurance, but what we've realized since this new board has come on is that's really not an appropriate charge, we're gonna have insurance no matter what, so that's gone. So we do, we took that off of baseball this year, cause it was actually being put on everything. So we took it off baseball, it'll be off all of our activities, um, including hers, so when the parent pays thirty dollars, if she does it again through our system, the parent pays thirty dollars and we pay her thirty dollars. If you guys wanna take care of that, and, and she wants to become a employee of the city to use that place, that's fine. But that's how it's structured now. Um, if Jamie wants to take over paying her, um, like we do, um, our bookkeeper pays her, writes her a paycheck, and it is the thirty dollars that each parent pays. We actually pay her more because some parents don't pay, so, just so you know. Cause I think there was a little bit of misinformation the last time. The deal with Trish is we have, Trish was paying some money to Nick. That is no longer happening, Trista, Trish has not paid. As long as we've been on the board and as long as Danton's been around, we have not received any money. We can notify her that if she wants to use that building for rec, for exercise classes, then she can go through you guys and go through your fee schedule, that's fine. All the equipment in there is hers, it does not belong to the rec. So if you guys need to charge her for storage, that's fine too, we, we'll get completely out of it if need be. I would like to support her, and if you guys wanna charge her rent for using that facility, the rec would probably pay that rent. If it's a per exercise class charge or whatever you guys wanna do, I know you guys talked about a, a, some sort of fee schedule. And we would abide by that fee schedule also going forward, I think we've used it twice since Danton's been aboard. We had an after-school deal in there, um, because the weather was bad on the last day of school, and we moved it in there. And then we had one board meeting, we would be willing to pay whatever it is you guys want to charge us to have those meetings in there. With that said, we are a taxpayer fund, a, a county taxpayer funded entity. The annex lets us use their building for events, which is also a county taxpayer funded building, correct? And so for our events, it would be silly for us not to use their building when it's the same money, right? I mean, does that make sense? For, for events. So, just some things to think about.
You know, and I guess I don't have an issue with people using the, the rec center, and I mean, I don't, I would rather see it being utilized by people than sitting empty all the time.
The Witt Center?
Yeah, you know, I mean, with Trish and Ally and them, um, I don't know if we wanna be in the middle of the people paying us and us paying them, and, I mean, I don't know how you guys feel about it, um.
So where do we get any money to fix that place up?
Well, you know, I mean, if they're willing to pay five hundred dollars a month for rent, I don't, I don't have an issue with that. And I would even be considerate that, I mean, if they needed to use the, the skating rink for an activity or something, as long as they get with Jamie and say, you know, we wanna do this, let them, let them utilize the building.
We did put carpet on here, um, when you guys get your ducks in a row on the carpet, feel free to come meet with us. We're probably not gonna pay twenty thousand dollars to re-carpet the place, I mean, if it's twenty five hundred square feet and it's ten bucks a square feet, or whatever you, whatever it was, I don't know, um, I don't know if those numbers are right, we're probably not gonna agree to pay twenty five thousand dollars, I can tell you that.
I'm not gonna pay twenty five thousand dollars to have it done.
But we are willing to help do what's right. Within, within reason, I mean, we represent a group of people too, so.
I would rather not take on two more employees, I'm just gonna, I mean, to me, those are rec sponsored event, like.
If you guys would like to see our books, I can show you the, the line items of Ally's paychecks and what she's getting paid and.
Unless you guys want me to.
Taxes we take out for, and, I mean.
You know, I think maybe.
Misunderstanding, that someone told us that, um, they weren't getting paid back.
So that kinda leads me to this, if you guys have any questions, don't ask people out in the public, come ask us. We're new at this, we're trying to put this ship going in the right direction, but we can't have all this misinformation being talked about because you know, everybody sees these meetings, right?
Right.
And so we, we wanna make sure that the right information is being put out there. We are trying to be as transparent as possible after what has happened in the past, so.
I, I see the proposal for your five hundred dollar mint rent quite reasonable, and using the other rooms, I don't see a problem there. And if you're paying for the utilities that are metered and ma- maintenance on your fields, I mean, there's several people that mow in town, you can always contract that down, I don't, if you pick up those things, I see no problem. And I certainly don't think we need to be involved in, uh, your employees, uh, I think that's a rec service that you provide, and Trisha's there, or Ally doing her dance classes, I, I think that should stay within your bailiwick and not ours, so.
I don't know the answer, are, is the baseball field metered?
I talked to Jeff about that a little bit today, and he was gonna look into it a little bit more, but, um, it's, it's not, it's it's metered going to the concession stand, is that right?
The water is, yeah.
The water is, yeah.
And the school pays that bill, correct? For the electricity and the water?
No.
For the football field?
Yeah, for the football field.
We're talking just for the concession stand.
For the ball.
Cause that's kinda how I mirrored this, I mirrored this off of the, the city's agreement with the school on the football field, right? Cause the city owns that property.
Right, correct.
And so I kinda mirrored this, the off of that.
Right, right, but as far as, you know, the lights up there at the baseball field, they're not metered. Possibly could be metered, yeah, I haven't looked into it too far in, but.
I thought, we thought we'd use them seven times this year. The lights, now whatever, whatever usage that is.
I think on the scheme of things, that's pretty small potatoes, the, the baseball lights and all the whole scheme of things.
Yeah, I know Benton, I should use them, I mean, they're four, four hundred watts.
They paid, they paid for them when they put them in.
Yeah.
The rec commission bought those lights and the poles.
Right, and then you installed them for free?
Yep, years ago, they've been.
And was the agreement then that we would, they provided the materials and then we provide the electricity then, was that our original agreement?
We, we provided the labor and, uh, it's, it's all wired together. When we built that up there to put everything underground and make it a little more pleasing to the eye, why the only thing that's metered off of there electric wise is the concession stand at the football field. And it's done out of the back of the wellhouse, and it's subtracted from the meter that's over on the, on the transformer cabin. So everything else up on the hill all runs, the pool, all of it, it all runs off of that one meter, so.
Maybe we need to agree to an annual fee.
I told Ryan, maybe, you know, if you knew how many kilowatts it pulled an hour, maybe so much with an hour meter, you know? Might be, it's, it, it would probably cost, excuse me, just if we did it, it'll probably take close to a thousand dollars worth of material to meter those lights. By the time we put the can and the meter and, you know, we're looking at a four hundred and fifty dollar meter and a three hundred dollar can and some time and, and that. So I mean, it would be fairly expensive maybe for no more than you would get back out of it, but we could do it by the hour or something too, so.
The only other thing I didn't put on here is I don't know if a lease agreement is nee- needs to be made for us to use the office over there. But that would, I, that's on you, I, I, that's on you guys to make that document, I, I think, for us to agree to.
Do we need to do anything like that?
If you wanted to, I mean, I, I don't know if you need to. I don't, I don't see that it's necessary as long as we have an agreement. I write things down because I forget, that's why I don't see any problem with writing things down. So you have some written trail, but as far as having a bona fide legal agreement grows, grown up, it's not even better than the paper. We can't trust each other. If you're wanting them to commit to a certain period of time, for whatever reason, then, then maybe, but.
My opinion is, I don't think we need to make things any more complicated than you are, like, I feel like, why don't we raise that rent from, from the five hundred? And I, I don't even know what that magic number is, you don't have to worry about buying a weed eater, mower, or taking care of any of that. I don't wanna have the city do anything with the rent stuff, Jamie has enough stuff going on. I feel like any money you guys wanna make off the rec center, we'll take care of all the mowing, pay the utilities, and it's, the headache's just gone, and, but we're gonna have to have a lot more than the five hundred, and you guys don't have the headache of mowing and doing all that stuff.
Well, I would say that, um.
I think that makes it more complicated, I was just saying.
I, I, I would say that, um, we are looking to invest money into that field.
Yeah.
And.
They can be in charge of it and managing how.
If I, if we invest twenty thousand dollars into that field, which that's, well, that's the bid, last bid we got, I don't wanna be in here one Monday night going, why in the heck did your mower guy screw up? And I'm not saying they would, but I don't wanna deal with that, honestly, we would be, I know, he's got plenty to do, we, we we are willing to take that on, that's.
I don't see a problem with this, um, agreement, um, I would say continue using the Witt Center like you do right now with this agreement. I would look into, you know, it also says the water and electricity meter separately, just, let's just do it like we do the school, you know, the school pays their water, electricity. And, uh, just look into that more on how to meter it.
Okay.
So, I think that's just the best thing, cause if you're looking into maybe watering it quite a bit more, you know.
Which we would be.
Would you, I mean, it might as well just start the transition into metering it separately, just so you guys can run as much as you want to, and mow as much you want to.
The water from the field comes from a whole different place, so it'd be.
That would surely be easier than the electric.
It's fairly good size, I mean, I, it could be three inch, I'm not sure. It's been a long time since they've used it, they had a tractor sprinkler that they used years ago, and we haven't overlooked in that forever.
Two inch coming up out of the ground.
Is it two inch?
Is it tied in with the pool?
No, no, it's north of the pool, it's separate from that, comes out of the wellhouse, is where it comes from.
It may be cheaper for them to just drill well like the school has that waters their football field and then keep their concession stand on the city water.
Meter alone's about six hundred bucks.
Yeah, so you may just abandon that line that you have over there too.
We're not gonna make any decisions on that field real quick.
Sure.
Um, we're gonna play five or six more weeks of softball and then we won't do anything, probably till spring. So we can, we got some time to work that out.
Well, I think you have plenty of money in your budget to do it, looking at this.
Yeah.
And I visited with Josh Moore a little bit about your budget, and if you basically have a fixed budget. basically have a fixed budget that you can extend it annually without any going to taxpayers for, in a vote. Just because you can raise the middle levy, I don't see any reason that you should. Just because you have inflationally indexed and can raise the middle levy, I think if we and other banities should probably learn to live with in our budgets and not necessarily do the colas just because we can. And if you could operate on less money, I'm pretty, pretty sure the taxpayers would appreciate that. But you've got plenty of money in your budget to do a few things. It's not like you're cash short.
No, no, we would never claim that.
Ross?
I think it looks fine. I think our biggest thing last time, which Trish was getting three dollars a person. I visited with her about it.
Yeah, and she's, and she was giving twenty to Nick.
I guess our biggest thing last time was, we were getting the thing about, we never use the back part ever. And then we don't want to pay any rent and help with upgrade and we were just a little frustrated that we never use it, but yet two people are using it and there's some money going somewhere.
Right.
Whether it's going to you guys or not, it sure wasn't coming here.
Right.
And, um, no, I think this looks more than fair. I'm, I'm totally fine with it.
I think it's pretty reasonable.
Yeah. What, what do you guys think about the soccer field down at Cornwell Park? Do we just want to take care of that?
I mean, I would.
Maybe, maybe this is an idea. If we, uh, if they don't want to mow it all year or if they do mow it all year, but maybe you guys pay for the fertilizer or maybe you guys mow it, we pay for the fertilizer or something. We could just try to split some costs on a gentleman's deal. What do you think?
I don't know what, I don't know what.
I mean, you don't use it.
Hate to maintain that place.
Right.
A lot.
Yeah.
Quite a bit. Um, I mean, I would, I don't have a problem at all for them taking care of the baseball field. I mean, I don't care, um, you know, if they're gonna take care of Cornwell, they need to take care of the whole time. Uh, maybe not the playground itself. You know, where we put mulch and stuff like that, but the grass, weed eating, hedging, fertilizer. I mean, I think if you're gonna take care of it, I think, my opinion, is just take care of it the whole time.
Is, is the city, how was that all set up though?
That park has its own fund, is that correct?
That's right, that's right.
So is it set up that the city takes care of Cornwell Park?
Yes.
And I think the city needs to continue to maintain Cornwell Park, if that's how it was set up.
There's not a separate fund to maintain it. It was just, it was donated by the Cornwell family. Uh, and then the money that's left over is to be used as the city sees fit, but you know, everything that's been invested down there, we've done. I mean, even as far, I think the last time that we really did anything down there, we poured those slabs for those bleachers and stuff for Nick. He paid for the concrete. We put the labor in, you know, we had John do part of them and he paid for, he paid for that. And, you know, but we planted the trees in there. We, we needed on a weekly basis. We water, we work on the sprinklers. I mean, it's a never end of deal, you know? So, but I'm not sure we want to turn it over to have somebody else maintain it and us catch the flack off of it.
I just don't want to be back and forth, okay?
You know, we have kept, we have kept one, we've kept one good mower to do, to do it, nice grass and keep it that way.
If they want to use it for soccer games?
Yeah.
Let them use it.
You know, if they want to donate the cost of fertilizer for that, hey, that's great. You know, I, I, I'm like Ross. I, I don't care. But I mean, we've got a guy that takes care of it. He does a good job of it, you know?
The simpler the better. I think we just maintain it, mow it.
We have the Cornwell Park funds in our, in our funds, so.
Yes.
We do.
And I don't think there's any reason to charge them to use it for
No, no.
A month and a half or two months.
You're kind of trading taxpayer dollars over taxpayer dollars, so. And they have cash, so. I don't see any reason. So get along. It's a small community.
I'm in favor for what you guys have right there, the top four things. Um, the bottom two things, as far as I'm concerned, the top one will take care of it and the bottom one just continue doing what you're doing. That's how I feel about it.
Hey, council? So are you all in agreement with the proposed agreement from the rec center?
Figure out that water meter or figure out that watering or something, whether it's remotely feasible for that ball diamond.
That's a ball diamond? Sure, yeah.
Well, if they take it to another level, that's gonna change.
We'll give a size form and that and see what it costs to put a pit and all that stuff in and get it.
We don't have to do it, you know, we, we just need to check into it.
We can put some numbers together and let you know.
Ryan's dead right. It might actually be more feasible to drill a new well and just have it totally.
Well, it might be if you buy that much water. I think we'd like to sell it to you, but.
I mean, it might be, yeah.
It might not be cost effective to water it that way.
I, I think after listening to discussion, what needs to happen is there needs to be something that's written down that's then adopted by the city, but then in turn adopted by the rec commission.
Jamie can type it out. It wouldn't have to be, just base it off of this and date it and Mayor sign it and Sean sign it. It's.
Yeah, we have a meeting in two weeks. We'll, we'll probably discuss it, but.
I mean, are you guys fine with that? If we were to put it down that you guys would pay five hundred a month and taking care of the baseball, softball complex? And basically the two bills there?
Yeah, and, yeah, once we get kind of figured out what the bills look like and what it is, but yeah.
I mean, I'd be willing to include anything about it. No other rooms will be used for rec sponsored activities. Cause I'm, I'm okay with them using the building. They're paying rent and people are using it.
Paying utilities, use the building.
You know, and if you're. If Ally's doing her deal in there and you guys are actually paying her.
I mean, just do what you do now.
Just do what you do now. Maybe have a little more communication with the office. So if we get questioned about it, we can.
Yeah, I don't know. I've done a little bit.
But I mean, John, is that something, an agreement, short agreement you could draw up and?
It would just be mostly, um, I mean, yeah, I mean, it wouldn't take much, but like I said, it, it would have to be something that's adopted here and reflected in the minutes and adopted there and reflected in the minutes.
But we won't have a meeting before they do?
Well, they can. I mean, they could do it first, but I, I, and then you guys can adopt it after they adopt it.
We can adopt it and then just retroactive it to the first of August. You know, that's gonna be after. Start first August thing.
I'd probably want to put language in there that says that they're maintaining insurance and, and that's all right. Share their activities.
Yeah.
Your insurance should be covered. Your, your own locations. Yeah, your property.
Yeah.
Do you have any input to this description anymore?
Are you guys okay with that? If we just put it like a an agreement so it's in writing and you guys have it on hand, we have it on hand?
Yeah, that's perfect.
Put it here, man. Unfortunately, you're paying for the sins of the father.
I guess, I guess John just wants to do that and we'll just approve it.
I'm sure that is.
Oh, I know how true that is. And then I guess once everybody gets it signed, we'll just put it in.
Soon as we get it signed, we'll get to you.
Well, we can, Jamie can circulate it to them to make sure they have a chance to go before you guys sign.
It's gonna be tried.
Okay.
Where's our money go, gonna go, that five hundred on the end of rec, whenever they use it for events? And they pay the twenty-five an hour. I mean, where's that?
Give it to the general fund.
Well, we'd put it in the. The only thing that's ever been charged over there.
I want to see a savings account going up and as top of that, we need to be coming up with a plan to fix that place up. We need to come up with a plan.
Can't we put it in the WIT Center fund?
All of the monies get receipted in the WIT Center.
Okay.
I mean, if you go into cashier, if you go into cashiering, if someone rents it out, it's under the WIT Center line, but it's in the general fund. So.
But I mean, that's what I'm saying.
I mean, we're not gonna set up a separate savings account, like it's in the fund, so.
That's what I was getting at, but you.
Yeah, the monies are there.
But are we just gonna drop this WIT Center issue now? And not do anything? Is the strategic plan to fix this place up or what?
She's checking on the carpet.
To start.
Keep it in there until we figure something out?
There's a hole I'm gonna be looking at contractors for.
Yeah, I mean, we need to start getting quotes on it and I think.
This is a problem.
Yeah, I mean, we need to start looking at what it's gonna cost in the future to get it taken care of.
When you guys get your results on your feasibility study, will you share that with us on the new building?
Yeah, for sure.
So we can understand what we're gonna invest.
They'll want to move you guys, if you guys can make that available. As soon as we pick, uh, pick an architect, which we only had one, uh, come back with the proposal, so it's something pretty easy to pick. But he'll, or their group will come and set up somewhere. They'll want to meet the school board and just, and you guys and then force us and force economic development people and whoever else has any input on that, or on that building and try to set up some different times. Hopefully you guys will make it.
That'll definitely affect our plan.
Okay, we can keep the, uh, WIT Center on old business and continue to discuss to make plans or we need to be making repairs. Um, John, you go ahead and write that up and then we can circulate that to you. You can take it through the board. And then we will go ahead on our, um, August sixth for our next meeting. We can go ahead and take care of it then. So we can look to see it by our meeting on the twenty ninth. Right, and if there's anything that needs to be changed, just get ahold of Jamie and then we'll, we'll look at it then.
The only thing we're not gonna know is that water situation. That's gonna take a little time, is that?
No, it won't take that long. We can make some phone calls. We'll go look at it. Yeah, we should have it, yeah. I should be able to put all of it together by next meeting, so.
Okay. All right. I had to give you much notice.
You know, David and I have been talking about that, though. We thought about it earlier on because we put that meter in on the west side for the concession stand. We talked about it then, so. You know, and I, I've kind of tossed it back and forth in my head for a long time that if we were gonna do it, how we'd split it up because everything really is in one big breaker box. It's in a four hundred amp breaker box inside the wellhouse. We control everything from inside that wellhouse, see? So.
That's where we turn the lights on for the baseball field?
Got a contactor in there.
Really?
Yep, yep. Everything's mounted in there. We turn them on, turn them on from the concession stand, but the contactors in the wellhouse. So. It's not hard to meter, just a matter of how, figuring out how we want to do it, so.
All right, well, thank you, gentlemen.
Thank you, guys. I appreciate it.
All right, moving on. New business. Uh, there's been a request from the school.
Is that the same one on the street deal?
Yes.
We discussed it last time. Are we gonna get, are we gonna do it that way?
He changed it up.
They changed it up a little bit.
Oh, my.
They wanted one way from Monroe.
Fifth to Monroe.
Monroe.
They wanted.
Coming west.
And this way.
Yeah, I think that's what we talked about before, was starting at Wade's house, coming around the curb.
Well, but see, they didn't have it one way.
Oh, you can't do half of it and not do the other half.
Well, no, it never was originally scheduled to be a one-way street.
Oh, I thought we discussed that last time.
That's exactly what I thought.
Because we talked about the angle parking on both sides.
I dug it out right here. I got it from actually.
I didn't bring my notes, but I've got it. It's in my notebook in my pickup.
You last time.
Yeah.
I mean, they're, yeah.
And I brought up that, I thought it was one way and that way, but the angle parking the wrong way and, and if you may make it one way, you're gonna have to means the angle parking on the bottom of this.
Because I made the comment that we were gonna have to close up the driveways at the library parking lot. And now they got buses in there. I thought that's what we had it all figured out. The only thing that we didn't say was bringing those, bringing those deals out in front of the library. Them little abutments out there at the sidewalk was the only thing we talked about not doing.
Bringing that, they're into a one lane right here.
Yeah, to narrow it down to one lane.
And then this pair of parking will be.
On this side and then on both sides here.
Parallel on this, on this side.
Yeah, yeah.
The original, see, Adam wanted a one-way street. Josh wanted a one-way street when they first started it. Well, then when they done the study, they come back and said it, it's not feasible to do a one-way street, but to change how it's set up and redo how the parking's done over there. And now they're wanting to go back to a one-way street.
Running around this way.
Yeah, starting here?
Yeah, coming this way.
And that's what I thought. I kind of thought that's what we discussed. This parking. Oh, it was coming from the south going north?
That's right.
Okay, that makes sense now. I thought we talked about starting over here and going this way anyway, because of the drop off at the school.
Well, we were talking about it. It was on the wrong side.
Yeah.
That's right.
Cause I said you're putting kids out on the wrong side.
Yeah. Cause the other thing we discussed was whether we were gonna keep those, keep that intersection a stop sign. At fourth or put flashing lights on.
Right.
And then, and then to paint the side of it to go down to the WIT Center instead of pouring a sidewalk.
Making that a counterclockwise rotation like Josh wants makes a lot of sense.
Oh, sure enough.
Way better than last time.
Yeah. I guess I didn't, I wasn't paying attention because I had to think about it being backwards. I just thought about it coming that way. Cause that's where everybody comes in to get their kids anyway.
I mean, they, they're the ones that see how it all flows every single day. And I, I share that, you know, I, I think this makes a lot more sense.
Yeah. If you go over at eleven o'clock in the morning, when the little kids are getting out, you'll find them all coming from the east. I mean, you know.
He wants the, uh, they want the sidewalk re-done there.
Like they're parking lots across from the library.
No, he wanted the side. Part of the extended request was to do the sidewalk from fourth down to third on the west side of Monroe.
Yeah, that's what we talked about paying.
Right.
And that, that's on the extended request, you know.
So we didn't mess up the drainage is kind of the reason we'd rather not do it.
But if you make a.
It takes a week for the water to drain from there when it rains anyway.
I guess I was thinking it was in front, I thought he was talking about the sidewalk in front of the house.
There's, there's a couple of different things. He had listed on Karen and, and one of them was coming straight out of the library doors. Having a crosswalk right there.
Narrowed up to one lane, was it not?
Well, not necessarily doing that, but, um, put a crosswalk across there to the parking lot across from the library, right into the library.
Right from the entrance of the, uh, library, just right across there.
Yep.
Just across the street?
Right.
Straight across?
Right.
And that makes sense, especially if you're narrowing.
That guy that he emailed to said they would not recommend multiple crosswalks in the area.
Yeah, that'll delete all that crosswalk or all that sidewalk in front of where the buses park. If you're gonna park buses in there, you can already put the sidewalk in there. On the east side.
Well, it's all broken down.
Yeah, it's junk anyway. The whole thing's broke down.
And, and, and some of that, just on its extended, you know, like Jim says.
Presumably you're going one way, they, you know.
I mean, it'd be great if it was done, but, you know, the main thing I think they're all concerned about is getting all this done as far as the painting the lines, making it a one-way before school starts.
Oh, yeah. I don't think that, I don't think that's a problem. We've been discussing.
They've already got the paint. The real advantage.
See, I think they want to keep this, uh, I think that's what this guy was saying. He wanted to keep this one that they had originally drawn in there. Instead of having kids come across here that were walking from this side of the street, that it was bottlenecked down out into the street for the crosswalk.
Yes, that, that narrowing of the, this narrowing that's right here.
And see, Josh wanted to put one right there at the library and that guy said that not to put multiple crosswalks in there.
But we just have one instead of two.
Right.
Yeah.
Yeah. But right there would be more feasible because it ties into the sidewalk there. You'd have to put a little bit of one there.
Isn't where those buses, where those buses are parked, isn't there a drive on the southeast side of that?
There's, yes, there's two approaches on, on there.
Which he's got, which he's got, angle parking there.
Yeah, that's, that was.
I don't understand that.
No, and, and, and the concrete's completely, it's completely gone.
Yeah, and the buses aren't gonna be able to turn around and go back out that way. I don't understand that.
Well, you're going southwest and southeast.
They'd have to come in from the southeast to go right back out.
Yeah. You can come in here and go out that way. And then if you narrow this.
That is, isn't there an issue?
So if we do that, we'll take the parking on the east side.
Close that off, that parallel parking on both sides.
Yeah, he's got angle parking on both sides.
It's not room for angle parking here.
Well, there will be, if it's just one way, yeah.
Oh, if you have one way, maybe, yeah.
Yeah, but from that, from where that drive is. You get my bearings on here.
This is, this is south.
From where that, from where that drive is, you've got to eliminate all that because the buses will be turning out of there. So there'll be no parking in there. From past that sidewalk at the library, past that sidewalk going south, there'll be no parking on the east side.
Yeah.
Can't have any at all.
You have angle parking.
Cause it's all, cause it's all driveway or two-thirds driveway.
Yeah, see, that's what I didn't understand. It's got angle parking here. Andrew, it's got angle parking here.
Yeah, you can't, not with the buses in there, you can't do it.
Unless he's gonna use this and this only?
Kinda wonder if he just made it through that and they're not thinking, I mean, he, he wants as many parking spots along here as what they can get.
Probably come up to skilled employees to walk the block.
But if you angle park those, you'll get more parking spots than you get now at the library. I mean, even if you do clear up just that crosswalk on the east side, you'll get more parking spots.
Right, yeah. But you're taking away some of it, you know, right south of their playground, you know, where they.
Of course, then you have to eliminate part of it because of that radius in there in front of that school, too.
The main thing is, and I think Ryan's did right, getting it changed to a one-way and spending a day or whatever, getting all this painted up.
Just kinda lay it out and see what we got.
We don't need to go any further south, and we gotta figure out this parking situation south of the library.
Can't go any farther south than that crosswalk.
Until we just figure it out.
Exactly.
Because these are two entirely different ones.
Well, you got somebody backing out, some little kid walking behind there, and I mean, it's.
If you narrow this right here.
But everything north of that's the same.
Yeah, if you narrow that down, it forces everybody to definitely one-way and no passing. Which is, I think, the idea.
But then you eliminate, you eliminate the parking down here, this would all have to be gone after that, if you narrow that down.
I don't think they want any parking in there.
From their sound.
I think from where that bottleneck is, they don't want any parking right here.
Anything south of it at all.
Right, well, everything would be south of it. The parking would all be south of that, nothing north of that bottleneck.
You eliminate those parking there, you'd have angle parking there.
That would just be strictly a drop-off zone here. You could put angle parking here and all on the street.
On either side, but not on the west side.
Right.
Okay, yeah, we got a driveway in there, stuff, you won't get many in there.
Right.
So, two or three maybe, maybe four.
If it was me, I would, where they have their buses on, on Monroe Street here, is that Monroe?
Yes.
I would close off that entrance on the west side of where they're parking the buses and make them use Fourth Street.
I think you'd have to.
Then you could, then you could put more parking there.
I would advise you guys, David, maybe you more, to contact Josh, get with him, what he's talking about.
Just walk it out.
You know, and just get it done before school starts, that's the main thing, and whatever signs we need to work.
I would highly recommend.
Put a parking in front of his residence.
But I'm just saying, I don't know if you guys are looking, like, to me, it doesn't, it doesn't make sense cause he just did a quick drawing. By the time over here in front of the library that they have the parking at an angle, I don't see how there's still gonna be two lanes. My opinion is.
It's not gonna be two lanes, it's gonna be one lane.
One lane.
He's got it here in this one drawing, there's parking parallel on both sides, that will work.
No, this is the one, that's the one, you should have copied that in your package.
Oh, I see, yeah, yeah, right.
But I was thinking that why don't we keep this first plan they had and just turn the parking over here on Sixth Street, just turn that.
Yeah. Well, I think that, I think that's a plan.
And it can still be two lanes, two lanes of one lane.
I don't know if you put two lanes in, you put parallel parking on the north side of the street, the south side of the street.
I bet you just let it, let us get him and we'll just.
We should have a drop-off area and keep everybody out of it.
And then we'll bring you back sometime.
I mean, I don't know the measurements, I don't know how, how much it takes.
David, get with, uh.
I see you guys.
David, get with, uh, with Mr. Myers and find out what's going on with all this and just talk with them and then come back with counsel, okay?
I'm fine with that.
Okay.
Okay, we'll make it a one-way, or is that like the parking that we did?
I, I don't think so.
I mean, there's curb cuts also, you know, for handicap stuff, but.
Some of that's already, there's some of that in place. We can tweak this a little to fit what's already there.
Yep, there is.
Wouldn't that work?
Yep, yep.
That's kinda what I was thinking, I was reading through this tonight.
Yep.
I think some of that's already in place.
It's easier to walk through it than it is to sit there and look at it.
The only thing I would, I mean, looking at other people or watching people is accessible ramp in front of the library. You know, that's your tomato shelter, that's, I mean, I think you need to have something there.
The ramp's clear back, see, at the south end of that little scuff on the school.
If we do that crosswalk.
It needs to be cut there.
If we do the crosswalk there, that's the opportunity to use it.
Yep, it needs to be cut there.
That's the only thing.
But I thought I was reading here, something about the concern is that crosswalk goes across the street and then there's just nothing over there that's good. But we gotta coordinate that with the bus parking lot.
But if you do that, you kinda got another dead-end deal that there's nothing there, and even if you take it clear out, you know, so.
The curb cut's about it, really.
Yeah.
Okay. Moving on to the next thing, 2020 proposed budget.
Any questions, Jim?
Just because she puts in the 2% budget increase, I don't think we should do it in the, in the ad valorem tax. I think we should not adapt any increase in the ad valorem tax just because we can't. And I say this because you've kept your city budget by a third in your office, or maybe not quite a third, say a fourth in your office. We found that we can do, live with a one-to-two man police department, the wheels haven't come off the bus, so we don't need the money there. We don't need to tax them, we don't need to increase the ad valorem tax just because we can't. That's my opinion.
That is the maximum.
I guess we were saying that.
I think we should live with the ad valorem tax rate mill levy that we had a year ago and not increase it 2%.
And I think it is gonna come down. When I was going through everything, Vicki was helping me this year and last year it was Melissa with those, with the equipment reserve and the, uh, capital improvement changes that we had to do because they weren't in the right funds. We had to basically move funds around to make sure that they got in the right locations. And so Vicki unknowingly continued this transfer to equipment reserve under the general fund. And if I take, like, if I reduce the numbers in 19 and 20, those, that will decrease the ad valorem. It'll decrease the mill levy that we're looking at. But I was leaving it at the maximum authority without having to, cause that's what they tell you to do. And then if you guys want it decreased, I can move that down. Or we can place it somewhere else, if you want the mill, if you want it to stay the same, we can find a different location for that, but.
I know this don't make any difference as far as budget-wise because it's all out of 1%, but I did notice that, I'm trying to find it here. On the 1% sales tax, they have a budget this year eighty thousand, next year eighty thousand, grocery store. Is there a reason for that?
That is because of the 1%, like, the twenty, twenty-five hundred dollars going monthly. I put it in that.
So that's not actually, that's, that's how the TIF is.
No, that 1% citywide.
So, yeah, okay, so I left.
We only give them fifty thousand a year out of our 1% that we collect.
Yes.
No. Part of the TIF, though, is that their 1% goes back to them.
So that's why it shows, we're actually getting all their 1%.
And then we give it back.
And then we give it back.
And so even though it's through the TIF, I left it in the 1% because that's where it's technically coming.
That was my only question, I wondered if that's what it was.
And then, like, in the TIF, uh, you can see the difference, like, the tax year this year is a lot lower because we're still collecting property taxes on the assessment from LJ and JB in there. And then, um, next year, we should, we should see that increase.
Jim, what was the cash, what was the cash difference if we go raise it to 2%? I know you can help, I'm glad to hear that.
Well, it's three hundred eighty-eight thousand, so 2% of that would be, isn't it three hundred eighty-eight, so 2%? Seventy-six, so.
It'd be what?
Seventy-six.
The ad valorem tax amount.
And then three hundred eighty-eight, three hundred ninety. Ad valorem, three forty-two, three sixty-six for nineteen, so seventy-two hundred.
But I do also wanna point out why we're on this topic. We still have, like, I know the wheels haven't fallen off the bus, but we still do have a police department. We haven't reduced that, so we can keep that in mind. And something that is concerning is even just researching the contracts from Elster, or trying to go through those minutes, like, a lot of things continue to be put on the city and the city guys. And we don't necessarily have the help that they used, I, I don't know if they used to. I'm still trying to figure out the numbers on that, but, you know, mowing used to be contracted out. Now we mow people's properties and it's just, they haven't hired mowing or seasonal help the past couple of years because the issues of people breaking mowers and.
Do you think we can go, don't you think we can go back to that someday? Of getting some help to run the mowers?
Well, if we had somebody decent, that's the problem, you know, we get very few that. We've got, we've got applications from people that I don't, I don't think you'd wanna put on.
I just keep getting, you know, we wanna, we want maintenance schedules, we need, we need to start doing some of these things, but I keep getting hit back with, we're doing what we can with the amount of people we have.
Jamie, I have found, and Ross probably has, if I can hire somebody to provide their own machinery, their own labor, and do it in a timely manner, I would own one piece of machinery. And I think the same applies to Sid. We had several people in this town that mow lawns for a living, contract that mowing out to them and then put it to these people.
We tried that once, and that went horrible.
As to why?
Well, because we have three mowers that we pay for. And what we were getting charged to do it, and, and what you gotta understand is, is the city is paying that person to mow other people's properties because they're not in. And so we eat all that. And it got to be ridiculous because you never get your money back, but yet, we still have to buy mowers, we still have to put people on them.
How do we arrive at our rates when we do, for instance, I saw the property getting mowed and we did it on First Street, how do we arrive at that charge?
I don't know, because I think it needs to be about four times as high as what it is.
Well, I just raised it.
It doesn't matter, you're not gonna get paid.
It doesn't matter, but there are some properties in this town that get mowed, and it gets assessed every year, and they pay it every year because it's cheaper than them paying someone to do it.
It's cheaper than mowing one more.
Well, but the people don't even live around here. They don't maintain their properties, but yet they don't wanna sell them.
I put an administrative fee on it because of the, like, we have to certify mail it and the amount of time.
Well, I guess my point was, you can't have it both ways. I mean, one minute he says we're charging nothing, then pay it at the end of the year, and then the next minute we say they don't pay us and we're paying it and we eat it, it's one or the other.
Well, it isn't partial. Well, but, no, the property, all the properties that are on the tax auction, they don't pay them. But there are other properties in this town that we mow and it is cheaper for us to mow it than them to hire it done. And it should be completely opposite.
Yeah, I think that's our mistake.
It is. I think we need to be, if we're charging them a hundred dollars to mow, and we need it, it needs to be two hundred and fifty.
Well, it's a hundred dollars per hour.
Is that a hundred dollars an hour?
Well, I think it needs to be two hundred and fifty dollars an hour.
Here, here, how much it costs you run a lawnmower, it costs a lot of money.
Well, anyway, what was, if the point is we're short on help and we need to keep the tax increase on there, is that what you're going after, Jamie, or what's going there?
I mean, I'm just putting that out there.
We've been down on help for two and a half years. The numbers have actually been low. I, I, I'm just stating the fact that it has.
Ever since, ever since Chris left us, we've been short. Which was two years ago last spring. That's when it really started showing up, and then see, we took Mel and kept Mel for a while, then he went to part-time. But then when we lost the last line, we were still short a line or two, so.
I say, I say you hired out, contracted out to some of the independent contractors in town and, whatever they charge us for mowing the property, add 50% to it, put it on the bills. Goes to tax sale, goes to tax sale. People pay the bills, like Marshall says, they pay it, they pay it. It's probably still cheaper to them in the long run.
You mow quite a lot of the local properties?
Depends on, depends on the month, but sometimes you do, yeah.
Like a day a week for one guy?
Yeah, sometimes too, it depends, how much it's rained and stuff, you know, we've got several that we mow every time, every time.
Cheaper in paying medical insurance, it's social security tax, unemployment, all the things we pay, they're hidden in moments of base property, not counting the, the maintenance and repair and the purchase costs on these lawnmowers.
I just want to remind you that we are still paying off one of the lawnmowers.
I saw that.
We only use it in the parks so it doesn't go anyplace else.
Usually on the fifth, there's usually about four or five, on the twentieth, there's usually four or five, every time.
Same people.
Every year.
And they pay it, obviously, or they'd be on the tax sale.
And part of those are gonna be on the tax sale.
Right, which'll be good, we'll cut that half.
Which will kick them back and we'll lose it in one direction, but the other one, we don't do it.
Your, your assessment is limited to the cost of cutting and cleaning and reasonable administrative, which is what she talked about. I'm not sure you can charge two hundred and fifty dollars for, kind of fighting this in our case, the city puts it.
If we contract it out and everybody comes in and says, we'll do it for two hundred and fifty dollars a yard.
I don't know if you could argue against that, but.
Valid point, it needs to be reasonable.
I, I don't know, yeah, I mean, I, I charge four, I, I pay forty dollars above for my own yard, so.
But it's not two foot tall either, that's something that.
It's not two feet tall.
Yeah, cause the first call never comes to us, twelve inches tall, there's ten days after that.
That is something I would say is that it's hard on.
That's why we check them on fifths and the twentieth, we don't wait for the phone calls anymore.
God, sometimes we can't get to them on the fifth and twentieth, but we try.
And how much?
I say contract it out.
I mean, that's not really the discussion I was going for.
I was, I was gonna, I blame Jamie for something about we're shorthanded in mowing and not raising the tax fee, but anyway, whatever.
That sounds like something you'd have to do next winter.
It, it is, state that we have to be responsible for that, we have plenty more important things to do. And mowing our own square, whatever.
Whoever does it, if they mow it like we do, you know, when the time comes, they're gonna be extremely high because it's gonna be a foot deep, and it's just all in the gutter.
It is ridiculous.
I mean, we walk them every time to make sure there's nothing in there. It takes a long time to mow one, it really does.
Just rip it up and whip by some of the.
It keeps Dale busy, so.
Well, anyway.
Anybody, everyone?
I don't disagree with what Jim said, he is right, we have streamlined things, we're looking for a lineman, we're just sad about that.
It just takes time, yeah.
And we'll find some, we've streamlined your office, we've streamlined the police department phenomenally. There's no denying, nobody's.
I think we could cut the police department budget by at least twenty-five percent.
No, nobody's arguing.
And, you know, rapes, murders, bank robberies, child abuse cases are staying the same. You have a hundred or none.
Is everyone okay with the 2020 proposed city budget?
I think you cut the ad valorem, don't do the ad valorem tax increases.
So, would you like to see the numbers closer to last year?
It's twenty-something, is it twenty-seven thousand difference? Well, the year before it was, from eighteen to seventeen was twenty.
On the ad valorem increase.
This is the year before.
Yep, the year before it was twenty.
Yeah, so a little over, twenty-four. So is that gonna be, is that 2%?
No, it's, 2% is seventy-six hundred.
Yeah, that's, that's a little over, it's overextended it last year, apparently.
I say we keep the ad valorem tax where it is, we've had in here, we've got the police department, we've cut in at least twenty-five percent in the budget, I think we can keep it the same. And still provide the services.
Nothing's getting cheaper either.
Pardon me?
Nothing is getting cheaper, though, I mean, even though we've cut down some of our labor force.
I don't know that we need to be part of the problem of continuing to raise our ad valorem tax. Cause I've noticed an increase in mine.
I took both of those, where I told you I could take those numbers and it would make the, the proposed tax rate for the ad valorem. I took both of those numbers down to fifteen thousand for nineteen and twenty, and it took the proposed estimated tax rate to sixty-one point four eight eight. That's just a little bit, what, one point, one point two?
Higher than last year.
Higher than last year.
I'm sure, higher than this year.
This year, yes. And I can, I. And I can, I, I mean, I can keep going lower if you want me to. But that just took away.
Yeah, but you gotta look at all of them because they all done that.
I know.
Not just that one.
I know, but that's the deal now. Two, that's intense.
What's that, Ross?
I'm looking at that police, what you were saying. I mean, there's no price of safety, I get it necessarily.
Well, the other thing is, is something, what's it, what does the police department have to pay for you, John? What's their bill for court and stuff like that? Doesn't that all come out?
Courts separate. Courts separate, but, um, a lot, like, a lot of John's is, is me, be, like, I'll deal with the court stuff or.
When I submit my bill, I charge through, so if you, if you were to look at one of my invoices for any given day, if, if I did something related to municipal court, it'd be a separate line, if I did something related to, for example, the rec agreement, it'd be a separate one, but I don't ever, I just receive a paycheck, I don't keep track of those, I have to go through and handle it separately.
But what I'm saying is, is Vince how, so does it cost the police department more money, Vince, out of the county attorneys prosecuting cases?
The municipal court judge has worked extensively to reduce the overall obligation to the city to the extent that the last court appearance, I didn't even show up and she called me on my cell phone. So, she, she has reduced the, what, what my fear was when all that happened, I, I would say that I'm in court more, but we also have more cases and we have more fines, more fees and that kind of thing, so you're probably collecting more through municipal court than you're paying.
Yeah.
I have had one contested hearing last month, I'll probably have a contested hearing in August, but I think those are the only two real municipal court things that I've dealt with here that I haven't been able to deal with just in my own, but I've had to make appearances, which has been great. I'm not saying you're not doing anything, I'm just were able to take care of it without me making appearances.
The police department also, like, I know you don't have to buy everything, but they're also making headway on upgrading their failing equipment and everything that they've been having to work with.
Well, I just know that, I mean, the dog tags come out of the police department budget, the shots come out of the police department budget, the maintenance on the, on the kennel down, the dog pound, all that comes out of their budget.
And I did just order a kennel for like the back of the police truck because every dog that we picked up the last two or three weeks is full of fleas, so then we have to treat the truck for fleas and.
Didn't we have somebody spend two nights in jail to, to pop up, pop up a provege or something, get arrested on that one? What does that come out of?
I'm sure it comes out of the police department.
Talking about a difference of like thirty-nine thousand.
She was.
Close budget.
I just took out twenty-five thousand, five hundred dollars to get it to that sixty-one point four eight eight.
Out of the?
Out of the general fund. And I can go, and I can go.
Well, the biggest part of your police budget is salaries, salaries and benefits, that's gonna be your biggest one.
That's gonna be your biggest expense in the city period.
Period.
Other than electricity buying electricity.
Which is basically all paid down at the sale of utilities, that's, I mean, that's eighty percent of your budget.
Did he give you a long-term plan out of, like, why it would be that much?
Alan did his, yes.
He gave you like a long-term plan, what his plan is to do?
I gave him his budget worksheet, which was basically just like the numbers and then, um.
That is a lot.
It, it's an attempt to continue the bureaucracy that we don't need.
I just saw the police department.
Pretty good without the bureaucracy. Have you noticed how many are on call today and working this week?
We have one on duty right now, actually.
And I don't think he ever needs a hearing, maybe it's out.
Yeah. You notice.
So, here's his budget worksheet, if you guys wanna look it up, I guess.
So, municipal court, that's almost all just the judges selling, right?
Yeah, and some of it's shaped like, I think, what, like, some of the stuff, like the court cases and stuff that you do, I think you put municipal court on there, for I know it from there, is where I take it out of. But long-term plans, like, I mean, there's not a strategic plan and I do intend on starting something like that, but it's just gonna take me a little bit and I prepared this budget with Alan.
Right, so your other department heads just left, I guess. I mean, I wonder what they.
Jeff didn't turn anything in, David came in and stepped up and, and kind of talked me through some of the stuff that they have planned, um.
Maybe something big planned is the reason they went up that much.
I mean, look at, he's not out of place, I mean, for the police, I mean, if you look at it from the far right.
Like, what, what do you mean, what, what, like, the street, like, the street numbers, I tried to leave the same just because of the street work they've been doing. I know David or Jeff just approved, I think, twenty-six thousand dollars from the county for, is it millions that they make for us?
Right, well, material, true, true.
So, they just did that, so that could, should, I think, cover what they're gonna be doing this year. So, I left that in the nineteen budget and then.
I mean, if you look at everything, every municipal, municipal court went up to twelve thousand, six twenty-five. Transportation for the elderly went up seven hundred. Every, the swimming pool went up fifty-seven hundred. The parks went up, eighteen thousand, streets went up.
And I know we streamlined it here, but I don't feel like that's a good comparison. I mean, not to brag on Pam and myself, but not all people look at work the way that Pam and I look at work, I don't feel like, I mean, I'm not trying to discredit anyone or give too much credit to us, but, you know, if there's work to be done, we're doing it, we're not, you know, not everyone works like that anymore.
Well, you're gonna be in charge as the new city administrator pretty quick and that's.
It was actually yesterday.
I mean, you've, you've done it in your budget, in your, your, your office, and I think you're a great example of what can be done.
Hopefully in a couple of years I can.
On budget, I, I've been going since about five-thirty this morning, crunching numbers at eight-thirty, I've about had it. And I, I would suggest that perhaps we have the Saturday morning or Sunday morning.
That would be wonderful if your department heads actually turned their stuff in, but we need to make a decision.
I mean, what do you think, if you're looking at it, I mean, is it really out of hand?
I, I guess I kind of forgot about the whole Tori going to, you know, clean, what do they call it?
Training.
In touch.
Eighteen thousand dollars.
Yeah, I mean, that, that does make a difference, I would say.
Run best.
Right.
Eighteen thousand.
Ten grand for the academy, at least got eight-five-hundred down for.
Oh, to pay it, maybe that's where, that's her salary where she's going, 'cause that is free.
Yeah, I think so, but I mean, you're still.
You're paying their salary.
You still pay their salary.
Otherwise she goes to.
Yes, you have to pay them.
Yep, that's how we know how much the academy costs.
To academy or to?
No, no, it's, it's.
The law enforcement training.
The person, her salary and stuff. I, I think her training's free.
But, but, no, I'm talking.
The truck does have an issue, um.
Here we go.
Currently, I believe she's.
I'm just letting you know, I've called Fisher's, they can't get it until next week. I almost wonder if it's not like a cable, something with the battery, it said battery voltage.
So, we don't have to pay her, but she's a.
I didn't look at it today.
But yes, when she's going to milk school, yes.
Cause he said when he.
And I hesitate to say this too loud because people haven't figured it out now.
Yeah, we need to take care of this because we're, we're taking far too long on this.
And it's working just fine.
I know, I know.
Tiny five percent of the people, it's a big.
My thing is, I just don't think you can pick and choose one department and cut their
budget when everybody has raised theirs, that's all I'm saying. But, you know, I mean, if you do.
I just look through here on the general. I just look for the biggest one and that's the one I'm stopping at, that's the reason I stopped there, so.
Yeah, so reasonable.
Well, I'm just, I'm not trying to nitpick it, I, I'm glad we have money, we have a great force, but it's the highest one on here. There, there's no way to say you're spending too much time, ridiculous.
Those numbers are also, like, those salary numbers are still the four-man department salaries and they.
Yeah, exactly, it's, it's still continuing the bureaucracy and we don't have bureaucracy anymore and I think we should make the adjustment or budgets that's got the bureaucracy. And it's, it's a self-perpetuating bureaucracy, I'm sorry. Self-promoting, self-perpetuating.
It's gotta be pretty nice.
It must want to be tomorrow.
Okay.
Well, you have to have it in the paper ten days before your public hearing and our public hearing has to be at our next meeting.
You have thirty-six thousand dollars increase in salaries, come on, in that bud, in that department.
Which makes you look, oh, yeah.
Twenty-twenty, right, eight, eight, eight.
No, that's not an increase. So, when you do a budget, you take your nineteen totals to try to match what your year will be.
Mm-hmm. That's a purpose budget increase in just thirty-six thousand in salaries.
But you're also down a police officer.
So, why is the salaries going up?
So, if we are looking at paying a hundred and fifty thousand roughly, or even a hundred and thirty-six, and we're down a police officer, then.
Well, right now, we have one guy making fifty and the other making, which overall she's probably about thirty-five, when you figure everything, so that's eighty-five.
And then your part.
And you bring that to eighty-six, that's definitely it. That's, that's two, good two-point-two-five percent increase over what we're paying right now just in salary.
We're a three-man department with two, three-man with two part-time is what was voted on, correct?
Yeah.
Okay.
Yep, that's true.
Okay.
So, I mean, what, what's going on right now in the police department?
Thirty-five times four, that's.
That's a hundred and thirty, a hundred and thirty-five times, a hundred and forty.
And then fifty.
How, how did we arrive at that salary number increase?
The one-eighty-six?
Yeah, where did thirty-six-five come from?
The one-eighty-six-five off of his, so basically the department heads give these budget worksheets and I work in their numbers that they request if it's turned in.
Well, if you put fifty and three-thirty-five, that's a hundred and five, that's a hundred and fifty-five max right there. And he's got a hundred and eighty-six, he's got thirty thousand over.
Well, but I mean, water and life fund went from a hundred and twenty-five thousand in twenty-nineteen to a hundred and eighty-five thousand for personal services.
Ross, the difference might, like, they might have added numbers in.
I was just saying, yeah.
To maximize the budget.
You know, this has a proposed budget, this is a shooting went off of.
And that's just how they do it.
But she left it the same, one-seventy or one-seventy.
Without having to have the election.
And this is one-fifty. And I bet you money, he wouldn't, he didn't change it. He, he's not trying to increase it. You see what I mean? That's the one se, the way he's come up with that one-eighty-six-five is I bet you it's a one-seventy plus Tori's academy plus her gas and makeup is, her not.
No, I can't read the writing, put up, it says put up. That must be her hotel or.
Those writings are terrible. I'm gonna watch that in Atlanta. Eighty-five-hundred, that's eighteen-five, so that does still have. Oh, it's long call, right there.
I mean, everything's going up through all the, through all the.
My point, my point of it is, this week that Alan went off of, this isn't right, that, that doesn't match what's here.
Well, it don't match what's there, but that doesn't mean that's not how it worked out.
Well, I sure hope it does, this is the current year for two thousand and nineteen.
Right, but what he put down and what, what the accountant and then go through, they may just round it up because it.
Twenty thousand?
Well, I don't know, they go through all that.
What I'm saying is, I think he left that the same, if that had said one-fifty, he'd have left it one-fifty, that's what I'm saying. This was one-fifty.
What are his other numbers by the one-seventy?
His ten thousand for Tori's academy and then his sixty-five-hundred for.
Okay, so those three line items are added together to get this number, what's there?
Yeah, the one-eighty-six-five.
Right.
My point of what I'm saying is, he took one-seventy right here off of nineteen.
Right.
And he just drug it straight across and left the same.
And that's how they teach you to do it.
That's how everybody.
I know, but on this sheet it says one-fifty for nineteen and on his it says one-seventy. And I bet if his would have said one-fifty, he would have drug it right across and left it one-fifty.
But nineteen is only an estimate.
But when they get that, that is what was budgeted for nineteen and then I have to go through the entire budget of nineteen and try to get it to act, as actual as I can.
That's what this is?
And that's why that's lower, the one-fifty.
So, we spent twenty less then?
So, we spent twenty less?
I just put it as twenty less because.
Well, that, we could have just started with that, not, we have a lot more chance.
All the twenty-nineteen stuff.
Did you get that until just now or nineteen?
Nineteen, I said that earlier, no one was listening.
Yeah, this is estimates of where you're gonna end up at the end of the year.
So, basically I take the first six months and then they.
Just because it says a hundred and fifty in nineteen as an estimate, we're also down a police officer, so you've saved money in nineteen.
And you want a budget from.
I, I wanna continue saving money and stay down a police officer.
But that's too late because we've already chose three and two part-times. That's what's been decided.
The budget reflects those.
And the budget reflects those numbers, that's what we all agreed upon, well, the majority agreed upon.
What was it last year?
Four full-time?
So, three and two part-times.
A year ago was about four full-time.
Well, no, they had four full-times and part-times.
And a part-time.
See, I think that goes with Jim's point, that we should be going down since.
We did, we went to three full-time and two part-time.
Right. And the budget for salaries is going up with less people, is.
The budget's not going up. The salaries are not going up, guys. That is an estimate of what they're gonna spend out of that line item budget this year. That hundred and fifty that you're seeing in twenty-nineteen is an estimate of what they're spending this year, not what was budgeted for this year. Am I right, Jamie?
Nineteen is the estimate, estimated number.
Of where you will end up at the end of the year.
And we were a hundred and thirty-six in eighteen, so.
But we were down two officers in eighteen.
Yeah, we were running on with one police officer for.
That's what.
How many do we have right now?
But.
But you also have to.
If you go back and look at.
This year, next year, we're probably gonna be full force, police chief that's here all the time.
You just don't know, but you want the budget authority to be able to.
Here's the thing, if you cut it back and you don't have the money to cover it.
Then you don't spend it.
You can't lay people off because you didn't budget correctly.
You don't hire them.
Well, you have to lay them off if they're already employed.
Part of it, because our county, county, county is covering us very solid right now and our county's not going to do that for.
No.
They're gonna start charging us.
They're doing a favor right now.
And, and, and they understand.
It might be cheaper if county did this.
We're not going there, we're not going on.
It doesn't been down that road.
Well, this is, this is the twenty twenty proposed budget, not police department.
Now we can move on. To just, I mean, sure.
So do you want me to take out that twenty-five-five to get it to the twenty, or sixty-one point four eight eight?
Twenty-five-five from where?
I took it out of that equipment reserve from general.
Are you just reducing ad valorem taxes and the proposed?
Isn't that what you wanted?
That, that would be my suggestion.
It's, it's one point two above last year. If Ross is on the, the general, um...
You have a one point two percent mill increase, plus you already have a property value increase.
Eight-eight.
Transfer to equipment reserve for nineteen, I switched, I think it's.
It would be small compared to what the counties is probably.
I guarantee you it's gonna be smaller than the counties, it's due to.
I mean, I just don't know whether we, I don't like raising it anymore when we have to, but do we cut it and cut ourselves short?
But you have three Republicans on the county commissioners that spend money like a Democrat on cocaine.
But we also have to realize that our equipment is getting older. There's gonna be a strategic, you know, I was really hoping that I could get the strategic plan done before the budget, but that's out of question. But, you know, there are things that are gonna have to start being replaced. We have one more loan other than our revolving loan, which is the mower. I think we have two more payments on that.
On the mower, one, for this year.
Okay, so next year, that'll be paid off. But we also need to start looking at, um, camera, our sewer system. Like, there's things that are gonna be coming up that they have to be done.
Our infrastructure is trouble.
Well, you guys still need to remember, we got a nine-hundred thousand dollar water treatment plant that we're still paying off that we're gonna have to invest.
That doesn't work right.
Eighty thousand dollars in at some point in time.
Don't forget those electric meters.
Still proving, proving your point there, I mean, infrastructure is probably, I mean.
And I.
We definitely, next year, I'm gonna say.
But I would say.
I mean, I have no idea that had to be approved. I shouldn't know.
But infrastructure.
But if you can't get it done, you reflect it to us, and we'll get it done. It's just gonna happen.
In her defense, she is.
Right, right, right.
And just reflect it to us.
From the funds, if you don't, if you drop the.
I'm not busting your chops. Just reflect it to all of us.
Because it's still coming out of what you're rolling into the funds.
That's what the next issue will be about, I think.
But as the city administrator, that will be handled.
As a, to make a long story short. I'm just waiting for it to add.
I'd go with the proposed budget. I'm not with you on this one, Jim.
Jim Hem's argument, and he is dead right, is there's a severe, there is a severe increase on every single line here. There's no denying it. It's a, it's a, it's a big increase of every single line. It's tremendous.
Here, here's the other.
He's not wrong to cut one or two things to, to itemize priorities. That's his point.
I completely agree. But I think we're to the point where this is getting increased, or we're gonna have to start incre, like, I mean, our rates compared.
Okay, if you increase utility rates, which I'm not advocating, but that puts it back on the people that are using it. If you stick with ad valorem taxes, you're on the property, period. Utility tax taxes, which are, utility rates are a tax that goes to the people that use it.
So if they own property in the city, they should be invested in it, though, I mean, I see your point in that, but...
I just don't want, I don't want it to raise utility costs so much that we hurt businesses that are trying to come down more.
Well, I think our tax turn sure generally rents people out of town, because our utility taxes, I pay twice here what I pay at the bottom for my utilities.
And that's every city, every county.
Yeah, but here's the thing. When you have a city that has a generator that sits down there and can supply you with power, it is completely different than living in the country.
True. And we negotiated a pretty good break in our city tax utility rates because of that power plant. We had, we negotiated tremendous rate reduction, which should give us quite a bit more income in the city without increasing our ad valorem tax. Net-net, we should be much better off because with the rate.
How long has that been affected? I've lost track.
How long has it been in, in an effect?
Just.
Yeah, it's just.
That's, that's gonna give them net mess way over what the ad valorem tax increases could give us.
I think you just leave it as it's proposed. I mean, that's where I'm at with it.
I'll make a motion to currate the budget.
Yeah, motion, do you have a second?
Second.
A motion and a second. Any more discussion? All those in favor? All those opposed? Motion carries, three to two. Okay, have an executive session.
Pardon me?
To discuss.
I haven't seen their budget yet, but they.
Discuss employee performance, personnel to the non-elected personnel manager exception. Jamie, who do you want to include on that? Everybody that's here, okay.
You say we trip for ten years?
Ten minutes.
Ad valorem. Make a motion in the executive session to discuss employee performance, personnel, non-elected personnel manager to include council mayor, attorney, for ten minutes.
Can I come in?
At city.
Yeah, a motion and a second. All in favor? Motion carries. We'll resume at nine oh eight.
I'd make a motion, we go back into executive session, discuss employee performance, person, non-elected personnel manager exception to include council mayor, attorney, and city.
Yeah, a motion and a second. All in favor?
Ten minutes.
Motion carries, five oh. We'll resume at eighteen after. I entertain a motion to adjourn.
Second.
Have a motion and a second. All in favor? Motion carries, five oh.